The board meeting's ordered at 6:35 AM. Jeff, you're on for our line. Okay, we'll start early today to do a review of the Brattleboro Town Charter Education Chapter 2011. The document was sent out to the board members some time ago. The town charter representatives came for our last meetings to discuss it and review it and came in with a work session on the document itself. I hope that all board members have a copy of that document. Okay. So, the question is whether there were any changes. And I certainly had reviewed it and noticed a couple of things that I think could make the document more inclusive and more relevant, I guess the word is. I know that Ron had issued some comments to me. Did you send them to all boards just to me? Does everybody have a copy of it?
Yes.
Okay. Is there -- I bet you that some people have a photocopy of it.
No.
You don't have it? Yeah, I don't see your buddy. Ruth doesn't have it. Is there a way that we can print it off?
I can go down and make copies right now if you're going.
That would be a good idea. Does somebody have a copy of it?
They can send you an email with that attached.
That would be fine. And while this document pertains to Brattleboro Town Charter, I think that some of the elements and the goals and the objectives really apply to the district since we're a union district.
Right.
So, it'll be a couple of minutes, but what I'll do is I'll start to get into it a little bit here. The principle, it says, is Brattleboro values access to educational and vocational training opportunities. The vision of this statement is that Brattleboro is a community that values learning. We are responsible as a community for educating our youth and providing people of all ages with opportunities for educational growth. I didn't have any issues with that. Did you have any comments on that? Under the goal, the first goal says, "To strive for the highest quality education for the children of Brattleboro funded within the ability of the townspeople." And my comment on that was, that I observed was, I looked at the word "children" and it shouldn't, to me, it shouldn't be about just children. It's all ages.
It's what could be students.
Could be adults.
Adults can be students.
That's right. And we do have adult education programs, so I was thinking, "To strive for the highest quality education for all ages of Brattleboro or all people of Brattleboro funded within the ability of the townspeople." So, when you get your copies, we can talk about that and we'll go through it again with the specifics when we have the copy in hand. And the second goal is to establish a strong cooperative relationship between the town and colleges. And the question there was, is what colleges were they referring to? You know, just Marbury, CCD, Keene State? Or were they referring to the entire district, whether it be the M., Norwich, Middlebury, whatever? So, those are questions that I had as far as, you know, what does the word "colleges" mean?
And you would think they would include other schools as well, other private schools.
Correct. And other educational institutions.
Yeah, other educational.
Could be not formally colleges, but just institutes of higher learning.
I mean, also, this is a statement for the town because it goes into, I think at the end, it goes into private schools as well. So, I mean, I'm not exactly, you know, I'm wondering, you know, what the vision is for everyone. Also, you know, is it the role of education to foster relationship between the town and colleges? Or is it, we want to foster, I mean, if we're talking about local colleges, they're part of education. I'm just sort of confused. Are we trying to help the town talk to the colleges? Or are we trying to foster relationship between pre-K through 12 to the town and pre-K through 12 to higher education or continued vocational education? I'm not sure what that says.
Right. Yeah, yeah. So, I think that that needs clarification in this as well. And we'll need to come back to the authors of this and simply say, "We need some clarification on what you're, what are you trying to develop here? What is the goal?" And maybe you can describe it in more words than this. So, the number three thing that they have is to develop an environment that fosters lifelong learning. And to me, the word "develop" in there implies that we don't have one app. So, my thought was, rather than say to develop, rather say to foster an environment that stimulates lifelong learning, which sounds all inclusive. Just a thought. And I have a fourth goal. Here's Jim. We'll wait a couple of minutes here and then let everybody sense the reading.
Can I ask a question? I was looking around for the SU report. Is there a goal statement or mission statement? Because what is that? I mean, I went online and saw the sort of the one or two sentence mission statement, which doesn't really, I mean, it's not inconsistent, but it talked about citizens and world.
This is Ron's.
So, I don't know how much we want it, because you've got to put a lot of thought into that.
Right, right, right. So, this is specific to the SU along with the other districts that we have a mission statement. And then we have goals. So, kind of a progression of, which is a little bit different. I was thinking, maybe we need to catch something about our district goals through this document. And actually, much of the factual information that I had came from our district report.
You know, also, I give it to the goal and objective. I'm not sure.
Right. Yeah, there's a lot of things in there that should be interpreted in different ways. So, you can see those three things are, I think they're trying to make simple statements. And I think without looking at the SU goals, I also looked at a fourth item to say that we want to encourage our youth to pursue higher education, specialized in or advanced skills that will make them an asset to our community as adults. And to me, that gets to the core issue of what I always, this is just personal, but it gets to the issue of the stayers and the goers in the sense that our future depends on us creating highly educated students who want to come back to Brattleboro, create companies, create jobs, et cetera, et cetera. And whether they develop specialized skills through trades or whatever, our hope is that they come back and that we reverse the tide of losing population. So, that's just a thought there. And that, to me, that should be something that the town should consider as a goal is a mechanism to bring students to graduate, pursue other opportunities, to come back and to put roots into Brattleboro or into the Wyndham County area generally. Any thoughts? Under the objectives, I didn't have any comments. I don't know if anybody else has any comments there. Under actions, it says, "Explore having student representatives on board and commissions." And my comment there was, which boards and which commissions do they have voting authority? What's the town looking to do? We need some more specifics there. And I didn't have any comments on the second action, which is to review methods of sharing information with the public and determine if there are ways to collaborate to better inform the public on services offered by the town, current events of the town, and other important information. I thought that that's great. The third one says, "Incorporate the school capital needs into the capital budget." And there was a question there, "As a reference or as an actual expense item? Some capital needs are financed through bonds, which taxpayers approve, although they're financed through the school budget." The tract, for example, is a perfect example. And is this charter document proposing to transfer Brattleboro's portion of capital expenditures within the UHS budget in some form or fashion to town voters? Which could...
That incorporate is probably not the right word.
Right. Yeah, yeah. Coordinate.
And that sounded more like what they were talking about when they were here.
Yes. So, coordinate.
David.
Yes.
I'm confused. What else is new? Oh, you're talking about the charter, but I, this was the town plan. There are two different documents.
Yes, you're right. I apologize. You're absolutely right. This is part of, well, actually, it's part of the town. I think this is going to be part of the town plan that's going to be incorporated into the charter.
Oh, I see. I don't understand your charter thing.
On the chart, does anybody know?
I was unclear on exactly what they wanted to begin with, which is why I think we were all hoping they would be here, but they said they wouldn't.
Right.
Well, Donnerston has just sort of completed, but not really, an update of their town plan, which we do every five years, but it has nothing to do with our town's charter, which hasn't changed since probably 1753.
My understanding of this is the routine periodic update of the town plan.
Of plan.
Right. And they're...
It just happens to coincide, I think, in Brattleboro with a review of the town charter. So, I think that, I think a variety of people, perhaps even them from the town who came to Tewseetown last time, interchanged those two words a couple of times, which adds to our confusion. Because they're, I think they're involved, they got their hands into both the town plan and the town charter.
Right. Right. So, those are some of the comments. I think, I think it's best that we put this aside and call them back. There should be a two-way dialogue.
Yeah. I had, I had more questions for them than anything that we can do, so I think that, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Could I just point out some of the... Yeah, I was going to turn over to Ron in here too, because there's a number of things that go towards the end of this document that Ron provided information to me this afternoon. And it needs to be, there's information in here that needs to be adjusted based on that information that we know from the district. Ron, I'll turn it over to you.
So, the bottom of page one, where it has the... I'm not sure where they get their numbers of 5,500, you know, 48,37, but our actual numbers for Brattleboro, which would include the UHS number six Brattleboro students and BAM students, as well as Brattleboro Town, would be 2,220 in 2004 to 2,062 in 2010. Let me just put that notation from the WSCSE student counts. Do you do student counts every, every beginning of the year and then we hit into the state by a total?
What was this? This year's student count?
2,062.
So, these are actual bodies, as opposed to whatever they do for funding.
Yeah.
Now, this isn't just the high school, though.
No. This is the UHS, Brattleboro Town, BAM, and Career Center.
Just the Brattleboro kids that live.
This is just the Brattleboro students, not Donnerston or whatever.
The high school students are from the five sending students.
Oh, okay.
Which is what they're reporting in terms of the, when you get into another section about the different budget information for the UHS of Brattleboro Town. That would also include those seven students. Then on page two, towards the bottom, per pupil spending, the 2011-12 per pupil plus of UHS is $13,625, and Brattleboro Town is $14,057. I think three, where it has current conditions, second paragraph in the public school system, Brattleboro Town School List has an enrollment of 768 students. Then further down, Brattleboro School District employs 128 certified staff and 58 support staff. It has a budget of $14,366,775 for the FY11 budget.
Right. I have a question on the first paragraph.
Yes.
There's a statement that says, "All members of the school board," which is the town's school board they're referring to in that paragraph, "sit on the Wyndham Southeast Supervisory Union Board, but only three are voting members." I'm not sure that statement is accurate.
Well, they're all invited to the board.
Yeah. That's misleading. And the next one too, it says, "The school district is overseen by nine elected," that should say, "The high school district six is overseen by..."
Yes, high school, UHS U, that's district six is overseen by nine elected school board members, five of whom represent Brattleboro. I don't know, is it five of those?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then, how many are on the SU? Is it three or five? I don't remember. So, I mean, being parallel, it probably should say, I mean, what's it saying? All members of the school board. Oh, so again, Southeast Supervisory, so that was, oh, that was the one you're looking at, because the town school board was messed up as well. We were talking about that.
Right.
I think in light of that, the public school system, I think it would be really good to clarify a definition, have a definition of the union.
Okay.
The district six union and, you know, maybe a little bit of background.
Were you talking about the district six or the...
Yes, the district six. The district six. In other words, they say the school district is overseen, what you just mentioned there, is overseen by nine elected school board members, five of whom represent Brattleboro, but it doesn't talk about, it doesn't specifically define very clearly this board.
Right, even though that's what they're referring to.
I know, but it's not, it's not a clear definition.
It tries to on the next, the third paragraph there, however, there's an inaccuracy there too. It says, "The towns are collectively served by Brattleboro area middle school, while Vernon and, Vernon and Brattleboro only are served by the middle school."
Yes. That was very confusing.
Right.
No, I think it really points up a lot of things. There is a certain amount of, you know, it's not really clear information about the middle schools and the sending towns. I think, I think it's a very important point.
Maybe you could put a lot more clarity.
Yeah, to go back a little bit, I'm sorry, Ron, for, you know, the explorer having student representatives on board and commission. I mean, the district six, Brattleboro human health district six board, this board already has two representatives from the student council.
Right, and they can come from any town in the district.
That's correct.
Right. So, it's not limited to Brattleboro.
Yes.
Okay. Ron?
At the bottom of that paragraph, I think, I think we covered more than correctly. UHS six employs 142 certified staff and 77 support staff, has a budget of $17,375,342 for the FY11. And we can get numbers from David Bachman on the Career Center seats.
Yes, we can, yes.
There was an addition on the top of page four where they referred to Career Centers that are all public schools, like I said, the high schools. Not under a academy school built in 1956. Everybody know when Old Grove's built?
It was there when I started in 1954.
Page two or...
Page four. Where the bullets are on page four.
Jim.
She's... There's got to be a corner store somewhere, right? That's my almanac. I don't know.
Oh, the street was there when my father went to school.
East Street, as they have in here, is 1954. Was it paved?
I don't know what was the big...
And then the rest of this page, they're looking for more information like on the facilities under 2017, UHS Bradley University District, complete the hydrochemical renovation project, add more information on space and facility needs.
Right.
Page five, it has brackets to add information on special ed services in Brattleboro. I incorporated the SU report where there's the bold type for support services, support services. And that's it from me at this point. Yeah. And here, post-secondary education further down. Under the first bullet, it says, "Community college of the Monarch, with undergraduate liberal arts education at the facility. CCD currently leases their space." My feeling was they might want to mention degree and certificate programs that are awarded there, because there are some certificate programs that are included in that one. How is it for me?
What might, what would probably be good is we set this up on the regular agenda for the next meeting and invite them back. Is that right? Okay, so we did, it's not our part in having a worst schedule, we can have it ourselves, but we just put it on the regular agenda.
I think in a way, this document is maybe provided as, you know, somebody who's thinking about moving to the area, the district sits area, and they could read this and see what facilities and, you know, what advantages the town's going to have to offer. So, I think that's a general purpose of that, sort of giving overview of positive educational opportunities.
And I think from our side, we want to make sure that the UHS portion of this document...
Yes.
China said that, you know, big, bold, principled, you know, where you're going to do, if somebody should do some work on Brattleboro, there is access to educational vocational training opportunities. You know, that doesn't, it's true, but it may be a PR thing.
Yep.
And the statement of the... I mean, my impression is that they sort of put this together to sort of provoke us into writing this for the town.
Yes, yes. I think that's it.
Because every time we asked them a question last time, it was, "Well, you know..."
Go for it.
If we want something really good, you know...
Right. But I don't think it's our, I mean, unless somebody here wants to take, is the word stewardship of this or, you know, ownership of this and do this, I think that needs to work through them. So, if anyone here wants to raise their hand and say, "Yeah, I'll take this and work with the town," let me know. Okay.
It's just raised.
But that's what I was suggesting what the SU was already doing and maybe blending that in and giving them that to say, not just estimate them, but to say, "Take a look at the goals and those sorts of things." And they did a degree that they're talking about all the other schools, and we're presenting the public schools. And, I mean, it's not our place to talk about all the other, by the way, and other pre-K through 12 schools, but that's a good one.
Okay. All right. So, let's move on to the regular agenda. We'll just go straight into it. There's a set of, I don't believe that the minutes are completed from the prior meeting, so we're going to have to pass on that. David, did you hand out minutes or what was the document that you were handing out earlier? I'll give you two. Oh, yes, yes, okay.
I apologize. I was not prepared to take minutes last time. I did jot down a few things which I probably lost.
I know the tapes are available. Someone will have to do the minutes, so certainly we can defer that, but you have to play the tapes. We'll talk about it.
Yeah, tell me where they are.
DCTV. Do they still exist? Good. Probably get them on a disk. Thank you, Jeff. All right. Any communications under the court's report this evening? Recognition of groups of individuals, there's no one from the public present here tonight. Consent agenda, is there a motion to have to consent agenda first?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. It's moved by Ricky, seconded by Ruth Barton. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. And the opposed? None opposed, we're in consent agenda, finance committee, Mr. Woodward.
Okay. Well, we had an active meeting. We had several topics when we met on the 16th. And the first item of business was approval of warrants numbers 1165 through 1173 in the amount of $514,791.15. There were no payrolls to be approved. Jim Day was there and presented a request to fund the position of student assistance counselor. This is a position which currently exists. However, it has been up until now partially funded by youth services, and they are reducing or eliminating their school assistance counselor. This has been a very valuable position in, at UHS. It's essentially the first line of intervention involving students with challenges with drugs, alcohol, and tobacco violations, including those on athletic teams. And we have $16,000 presently in our budget to help support this position. And Jim has asked that in lieu of youth services funding the rest, that we be able to keep the position as a full-time 10-month position, and that would mean adding $20,000 to the $16,000 presently in the budget for a total of $36,000. However, this does not require a change in our bottom line as there are going to be some restructurings in two other departments that will more than offset this additional money for this position. So, the finance committee, after reviewing it, unanimously agreed that that was a sensible approach to the student assistance counselor. So, it does not have any negative effect on the budget. Secondly, technology support position. This is a position that was approved in February for our budget for next year, and Jim's request is to start that position a little bit early based on the huge backlog of work there is in technology. And the estimated cost of starting early would be, depending on when we can get somebody going, which would be certainly probably not before April and maybe as late as the 1st of May, it would add about $10,000 in cost for this school year. However, again, in this situation, Jim is confident that he will more than compensate for that by reductions or money that he doesn't need to spend in other areas. So, based on that, we also approve that early startup. The exact amount would depend, of course, on when they get the person activated. We talked about the Eames Fund, and the committee reviewed Jim Kane's recommendation. We talked about the Eames Fund, and the committee reviewed Jim Kane's recommendation for distributing some money. The Eames Fund now is performing as the economy's come back. The Eames Fund has come back nicely, and we should be able to make awards. David was not at the meeting, and he weighed in a little later, and we were all comfortable with a slight alteration of that to include a little bit more. And I think we will, we will need to take that one up outside consent agenda, is that correct?
Maybe it needs for approval, right?
Yes, that one does.
Yeah, so after we do consent agenda, do you want to make that motion?
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. And lastly, and we really didn't get into the discussion of this yet, where our next meeting, which will be April 6th, we will be hearing from Robert Clark on update on operations and maintenance of the plant facility and some things that he wants us to take under advisement.
Anybody have any questions on that? So one of the things that Robert's going to be meeting on, I'm hoping to bring into the finance committee as well is there's a company in Bennington that is working on a project statewide to, we have a woodchip boiler. It's called Meserschmidt Boiler, and they're contemplating whether or not the boiler can use switchgrass, compressed grass, instead of woodchips, which are continuing to rise in cost. So a company's going to come in and speak to us about that. And I will disclose that they are a former client of mine. And you could say almost that they're a current client, I still maintain contact with them. So they're going to be coming in to talk about the process of how that would work to test it in our boiler. Rutland Hospital and Bennington, I believe, High School are contemplating switching to that. And there are a number of operations and plants in the states that are currently doing it. There's two large operations in Pennsylvania that are using this product. And it may save us a significant amount of money over woodchips if it's successful. So all are welcome to attend. Planning and policy? Has not met?
Has not met.
Okay. And would you like to schedule a plan? Since there's no chair yet of planning and policy, as far as I know, is there a desire to schedule a meeting so that you can appoint the chair and begin moving forward on that?
I guess so. I was sort of waiting for the committee assignments to come out.
Oh, they are out?
I have not seen them.
You were on email.
I did not, I have not seen them.
I got it.
I have a copy right here.
I think there's a copy, yeah. I can try sending it to you again. And as the board notes, we're still missing the Vernon rep. And we've sent a letter to Vernon asking them, Mike has officially resigned. And we posted that, and we're, we'll pass around this letter to ask the Vernon board that they need to appoint someone.
My understanding is that the select will decide if they want to.
No, it would be the Vernon School Board that interviews candidates and appoints. Right, the select board doesn't do it.
Oh, the select board doesn't?
No, same as in Rattlerboro.
Rattlerboro the...
Rattlerboro does, for the Rattlerboro town. It does, with the town, but not for the high school.
Right.
Right, remember, we had to make SCN.
Oh, I know, yeah, we actually, I mean, my old group.
Your old, yeah.
Town board.
All righty. So I'll ask a question again, does planning and policy want to try and meet before the next meeting? So we schedule that and warn it?
How about if the three of us chat at the end of this meeting, find a time that works for the three of us, and then I will let Barb know so she can warn it.
Perfect, works for me. Great, TCC?
We met earlier this evening. I've been elected chair of the TCC.
All right.
And we brought up our new members on what TCC is, what the objectives are, talked about some goals and some agenda settings, and did approval of some 1% funding before our 6:30 start time for our regular.
Great. And do you need to discuss that 1% money and consent agenda?
Well, we approved some 1% funds that, again, we approved some 1% funds for the guidance department to do some work with combining a couple of different operations that they do into one thing over the course of the summer for next school year. And we approved that.
I think typically we discussed that it comes out in consent agenda as part of the approval.
Approval as part of consent, yeah.
Didn't we approve the science?
We did not, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, we did, I'm sorry. I apologize, we were going to, then we did last second. And we also approved some 1% funds for the science department as well.
Great. BAMS committee?
Has not met.
Well, the list, the committee list I got has just two members on it. Is that the way, is that its current composition?
Well, I think we have to wait for the Vernon representative because I think at this point at least it's the two from Rattlerboro, and then at least the Vernon rep will be joining. Hopefully, another Rattlerboro person could be joining as well.
Do you need to hold a meeting?
I would like to hold a meeting with the committee.
So I'll be a temporary third.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Does that work?
Yes. And so shall we not wait until the Vernon rep comes up?
Correct, if you need to meet and handle some items, let's do that.
Well, okay, so I'll send email out to you, Ricky, and Russ.
How about we meet immediately prior to this? Does that work for you? Can you meet at 6:30 or?
Unfortunately, TCC meets at that time, so many of us are TCC. Typically, BAMS has been meeting in the morning the day of our board meeting.
Does that work?
TCC meet though before every board meeting or one a month?
Every board meeting, most times, yeah.
Okay, hopefully.
So if you would, we'll put it in the minutes, but if you would warn it to Barb Nokowski that we'll meet at whatever time in the morning on, before the next meeting.
Does that work, Russ, 7:15?
7:15 on the fourth at the conference room across from your desk.
7:15 on April 4th.
We have to leave his office.
As long as we're discussing schedule, it has been sort of additional. Planning and policy is also in the meets prior to this meeting. So usually, we have planning policy and TCCs.
That's right.
Yeah, prior to meetings.
Which is why BAMS can't meet during that time.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay, 7:15, April 4th is great.
I'll be there.
Right, Russ, that works for you?
7:15.
And what's the place again?
At the BAMS conference room.
Career Center?
Meet, similar situation.
Okay, so I'll let you muster the troops?
Yep.
And if you need to stand in for a third person, let me know.
I know where to look.
You know where my email? Buildings and grounds?
We have not met, but we had a discussion at finance, being that we're also all on finance in that committee, and the discussion centered around the fact that the building and grounds was somewhat resuscitated as a committee during the construction and through the period of construction and post-construction. And we were wondering if we should just fold its purposes and functions back into finance, you know, given that, I mean, that was essentially, and we just kind of bandied it about.
Okay. What's the sense of the board?
Also, happy to.
Don't all speak at once, you can't handle it.
Yeah, most of these issues are brought to us, you know, either by Bob Clark or, you know, I mean, we're, you know, that's, they're usually monetary decisions, you know, dealing with expenditure, so.
And we've never actually created a line item in the budget to handle this. We've never put anything into the budget to say, you know, buildings and grounds tends to be specific to the...
Extra oversight of the construction process.
Right. But on the other side, you know, it'd be nice to consider some trees or some other work on the school to make it even more attractive than it is.
My interest in keeping it going or after the project was done was to get into some of the things like energy conservation and things like that. But I agreed with, when we were discussing it the other day with Scott and Ruth, that if that, if there's a place on the finance committee for that, and many of the things do involve some sort of either capital expenditure or expense item, then I'm fine with that. But my point was just, we've been, three or four years now, we've been reporting at every meeting that we have not met.
I know.
So after a while, you know, the viewing public is going to wonder how much we, what our stipend is for building and grounds that never meets, which is the same as for other committees, you know.
So after we come out of consent agenda, do you wish to make a motion to dissolve buildings and grounds and place it into?
Do we need to dissolve that? I mean, do, yeah, I was going to say, do all committees?
You can keep it as that.
Right.
Do you want to give it as an ad hoc under finance?
Right.
And then probably wouldn't have to say at every meeting.
And if I can remember.
So I'll move it off of the agenda from now, I'm sorry.
That's good.
I'll move it off the agenda and put it under, as committee, as an ad hoc under finance.
Under finance.
And if I remember correctly, too, before we started the building project, I think that's where it was. It was, building and grounds was part of finance, and it was all part of one committee, and we broke it out just for the purposes of the building project.
Right.
So, moving it back seems to make sense.
They had to take out sidewalks and this.
Okay, is there anything else then under consent agenda this evening? There being none, all in favor of approving consent agenda as presented? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Yes. We'll move into the administrative reports. Thank you.
Okay. First of all, March 31st is our annual exploratory open house coming up, and it's the first run that we invite sixth grade students and parents to attend for next year's students. And I invite everybody here to attend. It's an opportunity for kids to showcase the work that they do in their exploratory classes. It's wonderful looking at their art and their handwork. The food is great, so come.
Do you invite students from out of district who might tuition in to that same function?
We send the notice to all of the elementary schools. And this year, they will go to Dover and Westminster. We've had a connection with both of those schools this year. And the private schools in the community, yeah. On Monday, our teachers are engaging in an in-service, all of our teachers are, and the focus for BAMS teachers will be on vocabulary training. This is a continuation of training that we've been engaging in during this school year. This is an all-day presented by an outside consultant. We are in the thick of hiring for the three office positions for which there are three retirements this year, and we're losing three extremely valuable people to us personally and institutionally. So we're trying to recover from that, and we have some very, very good candidates. We had more than 50 people apply for the three positions. And we've spent 12 hours in interviews over the past week. And on Thursday of this week, we are bringing in two finalists for the administrative secretary position, each to spend two hours in the office. We're going to give each candidate a writing task to do in addition to some observational activities. I think we're going to involve some kids in this process to come in down, interact with this person in a staged event. The kids are going to be told what's going on.
I'll take care of that.
Anyway, we have some great candidates, and I think we're getting down to having a hard time deciding on who they really will be, but we're moving along in that process. We also have a school assistance program counselor at BAMS, a .6 position. And finance committee has not heard about it from me yet because Jim Kane and I are working to ascertain whether we can absorb that .6 role in our building. It's not clear that we can yet. As soon as I know something, I'll bring it to the committee. As you know, we've been working toward a special education inclusion model now this year, starting last year, and we're making great gains with that, I believe. And we have a tweaking of it for next year relative to staffing with the inclusion model. And this is something I would bring to the BAMS committee and apprise you of that. Last week, all of our students received a 45-minute training on cyberbullying from a state consultant from an organization called Technical. She was great, the kids were wonderful, and she was equally terrific and engaging. And it was a very good presentation. And they learned that it is against the law to use electronic resources to bully, and that they could be cited for disorderly conduct. And that was made very clear to them, and I was glad they really heard that. That was a good thing. And I guess lastly, I have pulled together a tech committee internally in BAMS so that we can now start to look at moving forward with the dollars we have to support technology, the most effective way of using those dollars to support integration, educational technology into the system and to maintain the technology we have. So we have our first meeting this week with a great core group of teachers who volunteered to be on the committee, and I'm looking forward to getting that rolling with them. That's it.
Okay, thank you. We'll go into Career Center.
Pass this round. Last weekend was a good weekend for the Career Center robotics team, and they were in the Northern New England section of the first robotics competition. That organization is founded by Dean Kamen and runs out of Manchester, New Hampshire. This year, there were, if I can get this right, 248,000 students, 22,475 teams, and 20,675 robots totally, all over the country in this competition. Our group won the, I'm sure I get this right, won two awards. The first award was the Rockwell Collins Innovative Award, which basically was for the design itself. And the other award was their, what they call the Finalist Alliance Award. And Mr. Kamen is convinced when they get involved in these competitions that it has to replicate real life. So as they get into the finals, they are required to create an alliance with another team, and that alliance needs to be one that's going to guarantee both teams more success. So they found another team from Vermont that had a robot that did something a little bit better than theirs, and their robot did a little bit better than the other schools, and they put together a second-place team out of the whole thing. So we're pretty proud of all that. The team was led by Amy Anthony, our machining instructor, and also one of the core members of what's now rapidly becoming our science, technology, engineering, math offerings. So we're very proud of them and their... The River Valley Credit Union, if you came by before dark, has officially moved into our bank.
Because they've got the instruction placard up on the wall.
Yep. They will be opening on April 4th as a soft opening, and there will be an official opening sometime after that. We do have our RAB meeting tomorrow at noon time at Austine School, and all are invited to that, and certainly our representatives. And also, a sad note, and I guess one that you have to kind of figure on when folks come into the school and they learn and grow and do all sorts of things, and sometimes they move on. And later on, this evening, during new business, I'll need to present to you the letter of resignation for Sean McDonald, who is going to be moving to a Department of Education position in New Jersey. And as much as we're going to regret seeing him go, I think it's a really good move for him.
Please wish him our best. I'm sure we'll see him before.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All righty, Mr. Day.
The two computers that were delivered this evening, if you can't get those configured right, you should somehow work through Bob Wickberg, and he will get that right for you.
Seems okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
As in the other schools on this campus, we are interviewing for one to two math people, one nurse, one physical education teacher. And with respect to math and physical education, candidates will actually be coming here to teach classes before we decide.
Have you received applicants for those positions yet?
Oh, yes.
How many applicants?
Well, for physical education, it was about 30. For math, there were about 16. And for nurse, I didn't count those, they went to somebody else, but I'm recalling about 10.
16 for the math position. Hearing that they're tough to fill.
They are. Even with 16, they're tough to fill.
Yeah.
Our Swiss exchange is scheduled for April 9th to the 22nd. That's when our students go to Switzerland. And if you look at this draft of the newsletter that's going to the printer, you'll see that our girls did win the Nordic Ski Championship. If you look down a little further, you'll see that eight minutes, eight months early, I'm looking for parents to participate in the New England Association of Schools and Colleges evaluating this school. The last time we did that, there was a real shortage of parents. I mentioned that the kneecap tests are coming sooner than. To be honest, real quickly, if you look on page two, you'll see the Katrina relief that you approved last time, that those students are actually going, and they are fundraising. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Staley, Court Student Dr. Staley. The TJ's announced we have the next SU meeting, April 11th, Monday, in Vernon. And that will be at 6:45. Representatives to the SU, you, Ruth, and Russ. April 11th, if you can make that, 6:45, Vernon, we would need perhaps some other places. April 11th, I think that's a better time. Yep. So is there someone who can scan in for me? Ruth?
Are we allowed to do that?
Yes.
Oh, we are? Okay.
Yeah, I'm at a conference in Wisconsin.
I probably can.
Sean, how about you?
Who's being held again? I'm sorry.
Vernon.
In Vernon?
Oh, Fern.
They usually have good food. So post-album.
I'm sorry, what day of the week is that?
April 11th.
It's a Monday.
A Monday. So it's in between our meetings.
Okay.
And it's like.
And the time was seven?
6:45.
We do an interesting thing.
Interesting.
We'll have. We'll have a new board orientation, new board members, March 31st, Thursday at 5:00 PM at the central office. You give me that? We'll send out, maybe the postcard has already been sent out.
Yeah, I got something. I think I have both the postcard and then email.
As was mentioned earlier, the Vernon Open Board seat has been advertised. I think the Vernon Board is looking to get interested applicants by next Monday, the 4th, with the expectation of making an appointment by the second meeting in April. So we should have some soon. I also wanted to just highlight from the last budget development cycle, some acknowledgements of Ingrid, Ingrid Christen, David Kaufman, Jim Day for all their great work coordinating the budget development. And I'll pass these letters around a little bit different for each, but just take a little scan, and then we'll send it this way. Really appreciate you developing comprehensive budget that maintains programs while being responsive to the tax payers. The last thing I have. I've got a school start time questionnaire that will be circulating through the Supervisory Union. Probably about a month ago, there had been some discussion about whether we would be able to pick back the start of the high school schedule. And we've done a lot of work since then, probably about two months. A committee of about 10 people have been meeting at least two times. We have another meeting scheduled for early people, which is made up of students, teachers, looking at this scenario, we had started looking at a couple of versions. But this one is probably the most feasible. And I still have to get confirmation from the first student bus contractor about the Brattlebar routes that logistically will work with the high school routes. And so this week, I'm actually meeting with the Brattlebar principal to determine the routes. But the contractors, as it turns out, the high school, middle school, and career center would be one hour later than it's been. With the elementary schools, not too much earlier. You can see the Brattlebar town times on the left are the 8:30, the victory starch. And it looks like they'll be adjusted by about 15 minutes earlier. When we first looked at this scenario, some school districts had flipped the elementary with the high school and had the elementary started later. And what that resulted in is later afternoon, elementary students. And when the time change occurs, it really creates a safety issue for young kids going home in the dark. So we tried to tweak the elementary run so they didn't have to be adjusted that much. You can see the outline towns, Putney, Vern, Guilford, and Demerson. Demerson, as it turns out, didn't have to change. Guilford's about 40 minutes earlier. The other schools were about a half hour earlier. So arranged from 8 o'clock to 8:15, 8:25. So again, this is a survey that will be going out by school to parents. And we will be collecting this data to get a sense of what the impact would be on the community, on the district schools.
And we're going to have, this will be on the agenda at some future meeting for this board?
Well, it wouldn't really necessarily take board approval. If you're doing that, it would require every individual board. What I'm doing with this committee is trying to get, one, that it's feasible to do it based on the routes. And, two, that we have kind of a consensus from the data that we collect, that it makes sense to do it. I am circulating this to boards to get their kind of impression. So far, it's been very favorably received. But I haven't done that with all boards yet. And quite frankly, I was hesitant to do that until I got the routes from first student confirming that they could do that. And I still have to review those with the principals.
So when would this be a time for me to make a comment?
I'm sorry?
Would this be a time for me to make a comment?
Sure.
I have, I went to a board meeting, and there has been some discussion in Guilford. As you see, Guilford's start time would be moved up earlier than any other schools. And because we have our middle school, and because of the drop, because we own our own buses in Guilford, it definitely is a different impact from Guilford, for Guilford, than the other towns in the district. And actually, I wish I'd, I received an email from our principal at Guilford expressing some of his concerns. And I don't have a copy of that in front of me right now, but I could bring it to the next board meeting. And also, because Guilford owns its own school buses, you know, it definitely is probably more of an issue for Guilford than any of the other towns in the district. And right now, Guilford, all of Guilford's roads are closed to school buses. So the flexibility that we gain because we have, we own our own buses.
Wouldn't there should be more flexibility, you know, your own buses? Because then you can.
We have our, we have more flexibility right now.
Yeah.
Because the roads actually are closed. I don't think I'll be able to make it home tonight, for instance. So, yeah. Can I stay at somebody's house? Having our own buses does give us the flexibility to do, because Guilford has a lot of dirt roads. I'm not saying the other towns don't, but we get hit pretty hard because we get more snow than most other towns.
One of that.
This is a challenge.
All children are put back?
Yes, exactly. So anyway, I just wanted to make that comment that, you know, I wouldn't mind discussing it some at this board level, since that, you know, it is my responsibility somewhat.
Okay. And just so you know, John sits on the committee as well.
Yes, I know. I know. But I've also heard from town members.
So we will certainly bring it back for discussion.
Okay.
So chair report introduced here, I'll introduce Jane, Jane Viking Swanson. It's going to be the minutes recorder for the board. So the process will be, Jane will produce the minutes, she will send them to Ruth, who will give them a first look. And I'm willing to take a first look at them as well. And then we'll make comments, send them back to Jane, and then we'll disperse them out to the rest of the board for comments. You can make your comments directly back to Jane at that point. And we'll make the corrections, and then we can post them and bring them to the board for approval. Does anyone have any issues with that procedure? Okay. That's what we'll do. I'd like to acknowledge that Barbara Marcowski was significantly helpful in that process of helping to bring Jane on, as well as very, very helpful in the process of working with Vernon. My key words, she and I worked together on my key word issues on the resignation, and also on the letters and the documentation asking the Vernon Board to appoint a successor to mine. So I'd like to just take a moment to acknowledge that work that she did. And I'm also glad that we got the committee work done. And if people are interested in changing or anything over time, please let me know if you're not happy with where you are positioned on a committee. We can make those changes. Until we get the Vernon rep on, and we hopefully can fill some of the voids in there, we'll just have to overlap and move things forward. I am eager to make sure that we get back on planning a policy on the review process because I know that there are policies that are expiring over time. And we need to make sure that we get those handled in good order. And that's it for the board's first report. So there is no unfinished business? And there is no new business? Is there any other business that needs to come before the board?
One letter.
Mr. Kaufman, I defer to you.
Okay. As I referred to earlier in my report, I have a letter of resignation from Sean McDonald. And let me just read that and talk about it a little bit. To the board directors and Ron Staley and myself, respectfully submitting this letter of resignation, a request to relieve from my contractual obligations effective May 6, 2011. The decision for this request does not come lightly or without deep thought and mixed feelings. I have accepted an offer for an opportunity to return to our home state of New Jersey and assist with the continued improvement of career and technical education with the New Jersey Department of Education. I am fortunate to be able to serve on the WSCSU Supervisor Union for the past four years as Assistant Director to the Wyndham Regional Career Center. I am grateful for the experience to have helped the school and community plan and navigate positive changes that will benefit regional students for many years to come. I have grown professionally and personally during this tenure, and will be able to apply these assets to my next position with the New Jersey DOE. Thank you for relying on me to serve in this capacity and trusting me with the numerous responsibilities and opportunities of the position. Most of all, thank you for the experience of being part of the WSCSU family and the Wyndham Regional Community professionally, yours, Sean McDonald. He truly will be missed. I mean, it is a very valuable position. Yet at the same time, it's one of those things, people grow professionally, and this is a great move for him to move into that area. I think it will play into his strengths quite well. And then, we are really have begun the search process already. There is an ad on school spring as of this afternoon. The amazing thing about electronics is, you know, I was able to determine about a half an hour later that already 31 people had looked at it, and I already have one email inquiry on it. So, you know, folks will be interested in this. But the whole theory would be that we would, that we're moving forward very rapidly to replace him, and that we'll replace him with his very best candidate that we can find. And with any kind of luck, we'll keep the next one for another four or five years, and it will go on from there. So. And I need to have you.
I would move that we accept Sean McDonald's resignation with regret and wish him well and his future endeavors.
Second.
Ruth in second, or Ruthie in second by Ruth. Certainly hope that we'll see him before.
I will make it a point of making that happen.
Wish him our best personally. And, you know, wish him good luck in New Jersey. Versus Vermont.
It adds yet one other thing that I don't like about Jersey, but it's still good. I know, I know. We hope they come back.
All in favor of accepting the resignation of Sean McDonald with regret, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Any abstentions? Motion to adjourn?
No, I have something.
Oh, you have something. Yes.
Yes. I would move that the board approve the Finance Committee recommendation that we award from the Eames Fund, three new $5,000 awards for June 2011 graduates. And in addition, 5,000 each for those recipients from last year. This would mean a total award of $30,000.
Second.
Ruth in second. Any just. So the fund, just so board members know, took a hit in the 2008 market sell-off. And the fund in the last year came back and had a performance of a $700,000 return from the two fund managers. So it puts us back where we were, very close to our original balance. And it seems appropriate to do as much as we can.
And just to point out, had we awarded in normal fashion on that year that we did not, then there would be three groups of students. That's why there's two now, two groups of three each.
Because we couldn't offer them, in that theory, where the fund turned down.
So I need to get the wording. The board approved the Finance Committee's recommendation to award three new.
Make three new awards from the Eames Fund in the amount of $5,000 each for June 2011 graduates. And in addition, 5,000 each, three awards for the recipients from last year.
Can you give her that?
I didn't write it down. I'm making it up as I go along. But I could, yes. Did I repeat it the same way?
Sean?
Would it be a time just to reiterate what those funds, who that those funds benefit in terms of curriculum choices?
Arts and architecture.
And with the addition of arts. With the addition of architecture.
Yep.
So those students pursuing higher education or advanced programs in the arts or architecture are eligible to apply. And there's deadlines and things, and they need to contact the UHS administration to be made aware of this. And according to our policy of how we handle graduation, those awards would be given now on award night versus at graduation.
I have one more question. Is that, particularly the Eames Award, is that in the BSAC scholarship award booklet that goes out to students?
I don't, I don't know because it's, whether it's available each year is based on performance.
Right. They don't think it is. It's a local, it's a local one.
There are a lot of local scholarships in the BSAC campus.
I think you two put it in, because there was a concern about whether you had the appropriate funding of the education program.
Because it is a really good resource for students.
Oh, yeah. So it's on. The, this year, we're going to keep track of all of the totals of scholarships and things like that, because I think that's an important number for the public, how many dollars that we give out to help foster higher. dollars that we give out to help foster higher education.
To the extent that we know.
I know, I know. I know it's a challenge, but to the degree that we can dig in and get that number, it's very, very good publicity for our school.
I think there's not a diversity about our very... I think folks understand, some people who make awards come to the presentation night and give them an envelopes, and we don't see the amount. So I have to sort of whisper to them.
Yeah.
I'm whispering. There's so no voice over the whole...
Yeah. We should be proud of that. Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to adjourn.
We didn't vote on this one.
Oh. Hi, Mike, rushing the ground here. So, all in favor of the motion to approve the $30,000 total scholarship through the Eames Fund, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now everybody with the unanimous, aye.
Now, can I move to adjourn?
Now you can.
Can I have a second?
Move and second it for all day.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at...
It's my responsibility.